We are on the air, okay? All right, welcome folks. And I'll call the meeting to order and would you like to join us in the pledge allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mary, roll call.
Bolson, Collins, Johnson.
Here.
Kellum.
Here.
Kupinski.
Here.
Coburn.
Here.
Kenopa. Here. And Collins is excused. Okay. Next is we have a public hearing and I'm going to kind of combine all of this to one public hearing. And this is going to be over our supplemental budget and it's also adjustments to the system development charges, which is there's a whole bunch of action items on that. So I will open the public hearing at 7:17 PM. And Stuart, could we get a staff report on the budget?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Each year in what turns out to be the final scheduled, regularly scheduled city council meeting, we review a supplemental budget. And the supplemental budget makes adjustments in the budget as it was adopted a year ago based on changes that were made during the year and to comply, really to prepare our budget for the preparation of the financial reports and our annual audit. So we identify items in the budget that changed based on decisions of the city council during the year and based on changes in circumstance and position the budget for year end. The changes are generally items that the council has had some discussion or some involvement in previously, so I'd like to mention three of the primary or representative changes that are included in this year's supplemental budget. The first one impacts the general fund and the proposal is that we transfer some money out of contingency to the court municipal court program. And if the council recalls, the judges report in February to the city council and then also in the budget committee meeting and my presentation and comments regarding municipal court, we identified that prosecution costs and prisoner costs exceeded what we anticipated in the budget and have led to an overrun in municipal court. So this would authorize, based on the discussion, those two presentations to council and discussion of the council would transfer money from a contingency account to cover those over expenditures that were not anticipated in the budget in municipal court. A second example is from public transit and in public transit, we achieved, we received greater revenue than we had anticipated from the business, from the Betsy Creditists, the business energy tax credit program. And those additional revenues, we would like to position in equipment replacement. And so the supplemental budget provides a way for us to modify the adopted budget to be able to make that transfer from the transit program to equipment replacement. So that's where we had anticipated those funds be made available for the adopted budget in 1314. So this positions those dollars based in anticipation of what was really adopted in the budget for next year. A third one that I'd like to mention is in the water fund. And during the past fiscal year, the city council approved refunding the water bonds for substantial savings to the city. And we adopted resolutions at that time that authorized the refunding of those bonds and issuing of new bonds. We wait until the end of the year to do the follow-up budget transfer for really two reasons. One, because a supplemental budget such as the one we're considering in the public hearing tonight requires a certain public notice based on the level of a transfer. And actually, this is the primary reason we have the supplemental budget tonight is because of the water refunding bonds and because that is over 200% of the value in the water fund and so, or in the single program in the water fund. And so that would necessitate a formal notice and the publication cost for a formal notice to be considered in a public hearing by the city council. So that's the primary driver really for the supplemental budget being considered. And as I mentioned, there may be others that you might have question on that we could speak to specifically, but those are three representative examples of budget adjustments. And as I mentioned, most have been reviewed by the city council at some point during the year, but they position our budget for, as I mentioned, the drafting of the financial reports and our audits so that we're in compliance with proper appropriation authority from the city council reflected in our budget document in the year-end reports. So if there are questions on other ones, be happy to answer those.
Questions? Bessie?
Stuart, on the transfer out, it's in the capital projects fund where it says the offset is the closing of the Albany R station REA building program. Did we know about that before? Is this something new or, you know, I'm wondering what part of this did we know? I know we discussed some of it, but some of it, did we know before and it's just being brought up now or what?
We have had the REA project that's been a multi-year project and there have been different phases in a variety of years. And in the current year, we were able to close out the project, have it finally completed. And so this adjustment would actually close it in our budget to reflect that the project is completed and would move the balance to a fund where it's been available for other purposes.
Okay. Was that in the actual budget process that we did or is this something just now?
It would, as it's referred, as it's kind of referred to in the title, is supplemental to the adopted budget. So it was not anticipated in last year's budget, wasn't reflected. Part of that would have also been that there were elements of the project that were being completed in current year. And so the current year budget reflected budget authority to be able to complete the project. And now since the project has been completed and the final costs have been determined, now we know the amount that is surplus, if you will, that can now be moved to close the program and make those funds available in other eligible.
I just wondered if this was in our, the budget process that we just went through, was this included in that?
The way it would have been included was that it was not part of the budget because it anticipated that program being completed and the program being eliminated. So no, it's not reflected in next year's budget, other than showing a history, which the budget would show a two-year history. And so it'll still show next year as part of the two-year history, but would not show any current budget.
We didn't know this part a month ago.
Well, we did because of the project, the project's not included in next year's budget. So we anticipated that it would not be and it was not included.
Yeah, and if I, if I could, Bessie, we have had discussions at the council level where we've talked about the completion of that project and that it's just been in progress. So I don't, it isn't new information, it's just completing what we said we were going to do, which is finish the project and close it out. We didn't know up until fairly recently precisely how much money we would have left over basically from the project and so that's why it gets.
Right. And that was my question, like when did we find out, I mean, so it wasn't included in the budget process that we just went through? That's, that's my only question is, you know, did we know, when was the project completed and could it have been included in the whole budget process? I mean, this is all I'm saying is, you know, like the supplement, what's.
So the history and the reason there it was included in this current fiscal year's budget is we thought there were some items that may need to be addressed. The primary bulk of the project was done, so we carried that over for this fiscal year. And then moving ahead to the 2014 fiscal year, we did not budget anything because we knew we had completed everything there in the project.
Okay, so basically you didn't know the end result before you actually submitted your budget for 2013-14, right?
Well, we knew the project was not moving forward, that's why it was not included in the 2013-14 budget. But when we prepared the budget months ago, I don't think we'd tallied up the exact balance that was going to be in the fund.
That's the answer I was looking for. I knew, I know you'd get it. Thanks, Mark.
Okay. Any other questions, Stuart? Okay, all right, Stuart. So is there anyone that'd like to comment on the supplemental budget? Okay, all right, not seeing any. I think since this is a budget item, I'm going to go ahead and close out the public hearing, not combine the public hearing with the SDCs. So the public hearing will be closed at 7:25. And council, did you have any other questions or there is a resolution on page three?
I'll make a motion for adoption of the resolution on page three.
Second.
Okay, any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, motion carried. Okay, now I will open the public hearing at 7:26 PM and this will be for the system development charges, the annual changes to these. And Mark, did you want to comment?
Thank you. Sure, just quickly reminder, system development charges and these connection fees are really in place to make sure that as the community develops, that development helps pay their share of the cost for serving their development. And each year, the SDCs and these connection charges are evaluated for potential increase based on an index, the Engineering News Record Index. And that's a national publication that tracks the costs of construction. The closest index and the one the city has used historically has been the Seattle Index. And so all these SDCs and connection charges are proposed to be increased by that index, which is just over 4%, with the exception of the transportation system development charges, which have that increase based on the inflation index. And then on top of that, the ramp, there's a five-year process to move the transportation SDCs from where they were back in 2010 to, at 2010 was estimated about $3,000 per single family residence in development. And of course, that number will get inflated too. But that, that's what you have before you here. There, there are a couple special cases. There's the North Albany in lieu of assessments for sewer work that was done in the early 90s up in North Albany in which the city prepaid some of those improvements and as development happens, there's a special in lieu of assessment there. And then there's the connection fees as people connect to sewer water transportation improvements that they did not participate in paying for, they pay for at the time they connect.
Okay. Questions, Mark? Okay. With that, is there anyone that would like to comment on, oh, I'm sorry, Rich, yeah. Can you use your microphone? Yeah.
The expenses, construction expenses, how does the, how do the expenses for construction in Seattle compare to the expenses for construction here?
Well, I couldn't tell you exactly what happens in Seattle, but I think the construction index is, is a fairly close representation for the region, the Seattle index. Obviously, they use larger markets because they have more data there than the smaller markets. So to answer your question, I don't know exactly what the correlation is Seattle to Albany, but it is the index that we have chosen to use rather than trying to develop our own index here in Albany.
Question that arrives in with me is our economy here is nothing close to as good as most of, well, all the, you know, larger metropolitan areas in Seattle, Portland, even Eugene. I mean, we've lost, what, 5,000 jobs around here? The jobs that Oregon is getting are pretty much service jobs. I mean, if you, most, I think most everyone got the WorksSource Oregon information. I mean, if you go down through there, you're talking about cupcake places and bars and, and that kind of stuff. I mean, there's not a single new let's build something. There's some moving, but like there's one moving from Salem out to Turner. But, I mean, they're all support kind of companies. There's nothing that makes good base jobs that you get big multiplication numbers out of. And those things, well, they, you know, you put another restaurant in a location unless you are doing something to make people go out to dinner more, that doesn't make any jobs at all for more than, you know, three or four weeks. I mean, an example of that is a new Chinese restaurant starts in town and there are people being laid off from a couple of others. I mean, it's just, you know, you have a little bump and then it goes away. So, I mean, unless we need to raise the money, I would be in favor of leaving it where it's at. I mean, it's a, you know, and I realize the economic development people are saying, oh gee, we're coming back, we're coming back. But, you know, their job is really to be the rally squad. And while it says we're coming back, there are parts of the economy that are, but by and large, it's sitting out there and, you know, when it takes 20% to keep the doors open and, you know, you're sitting at 18 or something like that, just biding your time. That's where a lot of business is. It's not a good time to add stuff on top.
No, I understand your concern on that, Rich. And it is kind of when we see the jobs coming online, it is kind of, you know, I really question, it's like, how does that support the economy? But evidently, our economy is supporting the market for the new housing starts because it has, we have been picking up quite a bit of the housing starts. We've, you know, we've had this conversation over the years and with a new house, when the fees, the, you know, the, all of the fees that are associated with every new house is able to be put on a mortgage for 30 years. But if you don't have SDCs pay for the cost of that, the demand for expanding the system, the growth-related component, then it's all residents of Albany that would be paying for it. And that would be, so it's either if you don't raise up the rates, then you're going to end up having all the ratepayers have to pay and pick up for that growth-related cost. That's where we've heard many times over the years that people do not want their sewer and water rates to be increased and they mostly don't want to be paying for the growth-related component to that. So it's either, it's either or. It's who's using, who's putting the demand for the expansion of the system pay their way or it's everybody in the city has to pay for it on that. Yeah, Ray?
What is the, Stuart, what is the current trending, I guess, for building permits, residential and commercial?
Generally, we are seeing additional activity. I don't have the exact numbers for permits tonight, but generally, the activity is increasing. We are seeing contractors' bids creeping up a little bit over what they've been. Contractors aren't quite as hungry as they have been in the past. So another thing about SDCs to remember is not only are they a cost to developers, but as you collect that money, that's a resource for the city, the city council, to take those SDCs if you have those funds and use those to help offset costs for other development. Those funds help fund, like the Oak Street improvements for Lowe's, we used a large chunk of transportation SDC fees to be able to respond to the opportunity to have Lowe's here. Without those SDCs, we wouldn't have the money to respond to that. So it's, it's, you are taking that in development, but it also gives you some resources. The other thing to remember is on the sewer and the water side, as I discussed during the rate discussions, we are not bringing in enough SDCs to cover our debt portion of our SDC payments. So clearly a policy decision for council, it ends up being a zero-sum game, you know, on the utilities in that we do have obligations that we have to meet. If we don't meet them through SDCs, we have to find another way to meet those.
Refresh my memory, haven't we been using a matrix over the last several years to determine if economic factors were, say, negative, that we would forego some of those changes on that ramp up? And then if they were in, if they were year-over-year positive, then we would say, okay, now it's time?
Yes, for the ramp on the transportation system development charges. Now, that's above and beyond the inflation index, but yes, that's, that's what we're doing is we're looking and as long as those two indicators are positive, council had indicated that you would raise the SDCs on the ramp portion for transportation.
Bessie?
Mark, this is probably a question that everybody else knows, but I just kind of want to clarify. When we decide to raise water and sewer rates, that's totally, I mean, comparing that to SDCs, that's apples and oranges, isn't it, kind of? And this is where, if you can clarify for that for me, I'd really appreciate that.
So it's, it's different to a point. However, as you get to the place where SDCs, you no longer have enough SDCs to pay for your debt obligation, then there's a decision of how do you pay for that debt obligation? And rates would be a way to do that, where you'd say, we're going to have, except for that SDCs aren't enough, we wouldn't have to raise rates. But now we have to raise rates to help cover what we're not collecting in SDCs. So they're, they can intermingle. They have not yet, but we're projecting in the sewer fund by the year 2017 to be expending all our SDC reserves for debt service and we're going to have to come up with another funding source.
So they have not combing, we have not had to use the rates yet. Is that correct?
We have not used rates to cover the SDC portion yet.
Great, okay.
Can I make a point though that I think is really important to this discussion? Because we brought it up before and Mark alluded to it a little earlier. When we built the wastewater treatment plant, when the decision was made to build the new wastewater treatment plant, you were given projections on what the cost of that plant would be and how we would repay the debt financing, you know, the obligations that we used to build the plant. One of the projections that was made was a stream of income, an annual income basically, from systems development charges. And that was based on, you know, it was somebody's best estimate of what would be happening in the construction world. And we all know that the construction world took a big hit back in around 2007, 2008 in that period. And so what happened is that our projections for income from systems development charges did not meet those expectations. And it, more importantly, it means that in the year, I believe it is 2017, we are not, it's very likely that we will not have the systems development charge revenue that we had projected we would have. So we won't have enough money from that source to meet our obligation. So we have to turn to another source. And when you're talking about supporting your, your water, your sewer infrastructure, the way you get that money is from ratepayers. I mean, that's how you do it. So you're going to raise rates. So I think the long and the short of what Mark is saying is it's going to come from one pocket or the other, but, you know, we think it's probably more appropriate to gradually increase the fees associated with new development than to suddenly have a very big rate increase in 2017 to try and make up all that difference.
Yeah, and I can agree with that. Just one other question. With, with what we're going, what we have to do now with the water reclamation plant that didn't work, does that enter into the SDC rate structure? Because we're going, I mean, we're going to have to spend extra money on it. And so does that go into the?
Mark and I, I'm not sure Mark will appreciate my bold statement here, but we did receive from Siemens a very large settlement, I think it was 4.7 million dollars.
Something like that for a high.
Okay, they're nodding, so yep, that was the right number, to deal with that problem. And it is our hope that the solution will come in somewhere in that area so that we will not have to expend too much in the way of additional dollars. But if it doesn't, if we have to spend a lot more than 4.7 million dollars, then yes, that would, that would come either, it would come from the other revenue sources from the utility, which in this case, our primary revenue sources are money from ratepayers and systems development charges.
I was just a little uncertain on, I knew we got the, you know, the settlement, but I wasn't exactly sure if that was like being kept somewhere, if it was already being expended because we have extra expenses now because it didn't work and so I just didn't know how that exactly was, was working. So appreciate the explanation, thanks.
Okay, any other questions, Mark? Okay, is there any public comment on items 2A through J? Okay, all right. Tom?
Mm-hmm.
And can you also make reference to which item you would like to comment about?
I don't, I don't have, your, your question, is that, is that for items going forward or the item that was just discussed?
That would, we, the hearing was opened up for all the system development charge changes, so that's items 2A through J, which would be transportation, water, wastewater.
Okay, I'd like to make a, Tom Cordier, North Albany. My understanding is that in November, the city will advance the, to the voters, a reauthorization of, that's not the right word. Help me with the word. Where you, where you're going to save a bunch of money by, by refinancing some city debt. And my understanding is that that city debt, the source of that is the water treatment plant.
It's a sewer debt, so as was described, the primary revenue sources that are currently paying that debt and would be relied on to continue that payment would be resources available in the sewer fund.
And will the, and will the, because you're doing this, I guess, I was hearing that we're, that the city is going to do this, propose to do it on the basis that a lot of money is going to be saved?
Right now, the city council hasn't considered in a formal session, we have talked about bringing forward in a work session, a discussion with the city council to consider that and the options associated with it.
Right, right. And so my question is, how does that potential play into the current discussion about needing to raise rates if you're going to save a bunch of money by refinancing?
You know, invite Mark to go ahead.
Yeah, I think the, to give you an order of magnitude, the, the SDCs portion of the sewer bond or our sewer debt is about 1.3 million dollars a year. So even if we have substantial savings through a refinancing, the SDC portion will still be significant. And this year, we're collecting somewhere around $400,000 in SDCs. So it's not anticipated that that refinancing will save us enough money that the SDCs we're collecting right now will, will keep pace with the debt service that the SDCs owe.
So it doesn't, so if this proposal for November happens, it won't forestall the 2017 shortfall?
It may forestall it for a year or something like that, but it, it won't eliminate that. Of course, we don't know what's going to happen with development between now and then too. That's going to drive SDC revenues much more than the indexing up based on inflation.
Thank you. I was just trying to put that other football up in the air because that, to me, delays the 2017 potential for shortfall. It could. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to comment on items 2A through J? Okay, not seeing any. With that, I will close the public hearing at 7:45 PM. Okay, council, we have, the first resolution is on page 16. And this one would be for revising the water system development charges and reaffirming installation fees for connection to the public water system and reaffirming an appeal and repealing resolution number 6128.
Question, can these be taken as a group or not?
Can we, Jim, or not?
You can legally. I generally would recommend that on serious matters like this, you adopt them separately. That way, if there was a, some sort of a legal challenge to one, it wouldn't tie up everything.
All right.
All right. So I'll make a motion for adoption of the resolution on page 16, related to SDC charges.
Any discussion on this resolution? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay.
Point of order, do we need to actually read that first paragraph?
No, it's just a resolution.
It's a resolution, not an ordinance, so there's no requirement that it be read.
Yeah. Okay, next one is B, and that's resolutions on page 18. And this would be revising the transportation system development charges for impacts to the Albany transportation system, and reaffirming the appeal fee, and repealing resolution number 6221.
I would move for the adoption of that resolution on page 18.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Was that, was that a no? Okay. All right, won't that be for one, and the motion carried. And next is C, and that resolution's on page 27, and that's revising the sewer system development charges for connection to the public sanitary sewer system.
Move for adoption of the resolution on page 27?
Second.
All right, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carried. And next is D, that item is on page 37, that resolution, and that's the connection charges for street connections to improve city streets of unassessed properties in the city.
I'll make a motion for adoption of the resolution on page 37.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carried. Next is E, and that resolution's on page 38, and it's revising connection charges for sewer connections of unassessed properties in the city of Albany.
I move for the adoption of the resolution, and I think it's on page 38, did you say?
Yes.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carried. And next is F, this one's on page 40. This is revising connection charges for water connections of unassessed properties in the city of Albany.
Motion. Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carried. Next is item G, that one's on page, that resolution's page 42. This is revising connection charges for storm connections of unassessed properties in the city.
I would move for the adoption of the resolution on page 42?
Three?
Two.
Forty-two.
Forty-two.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carried. Okay, next is H, and that is on page 43. That's revising in lieu of assessment charges for the North Albany sanitary sewer basin, and repealing resolution number 6135.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carried. Next item I, that's on page 45. It's revising special connection charges for a portion of the Columbus Street sanitary sewer lift station project cost, which are allocated to unassessed properties within the lift station service area.
I'll make a motion for adoption, the ordinance on page 45.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carried. And last is J, this one's on page 47. It's revising the improvement assurance charges for the non-oversized portion of future arterial and collector street improvements for streets located within the North Albany area.
Move for the adoption of the resolution on page 47?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carried. All right, did that. And next is business from the public. Is there anyone here this evening that would like to bring an item forward? Okay, oh, Tom?
Name is Tom Cordier, 2240 Northwest Park Terrace, out in North Albany. First of all, I'd like to commend the council for passing ordinance number 5812, 5812, on the 12th of June, which refers some language to the voters to satisfy the intent of the debt petition. I commend City Attorney Delapore for his guiding hand in the language. It's difficult sometimes, and so we worked together pretty well, and he kept the focus on that, and so I appreciate that. Couple of other things, you may be aware that the House of Representatives here in Oregon passed a bill unanimously recently, and there was an equivalent bill passed by the Senate unanimously. So both of those bills are, can't be overturned by the governor. And the subject has to do with, in the future, any public safety levy monies cannot be taken by the school district.
It's not the school district, urban renewal district, I think.
I said it wrong. Take, take, I, thank you. Terrible, terrible mistake.
Confused.
Yeah, it, public safety levy monies that were passed last year, last November, are siphoned away by Albany Urban Renewal. And I appreciated Bill Coburn's comment, the last time this was discussed, at least with me in this kind of meeting, where no, everybody didn't know that money was gonna be taken from the public safety levy and sent to Urban Renewal. I appreciated that comment. I would encourage the council to have a public hearing about whether the city of Albany ought to put on this November's ballot, a, an item for the public to vote on, which would bring the public safety levy that was passed last November, to reauthorize that under the current terms, which would bring it under the timeframe, having been approved after January 1 of Had that measure, that public safety levy, been put on the ballot this year, it would fall under that, those two bills, and money would not be able to be taken by Urban Renewal. And so I'm asking the council to have a public hearing, to see if people want to continue having money taken from public safety and sent to Urban Renewal, or not. And it's a, I, I'm unsure of the exact language, but what I'm told is that it would reauthorize the levy under the current terms, and that would bring it under the influence of the recently passed Senate and House bills, that will obviously be signed into law. So I think that that's an appropriate thing to do. Voters were not told that money was gonna be sent that way, and some people say, well, if you knew what was going on, you'd know that. Well, not everybody knows what's going on, and I appreciate Mr. Coburn's comments. The other thing that I would ask the council to consider is the ordinance number 5812 refers to the voters, a, the language that will require voter approval to increase borrowing by the city, and that's defined in all that, and I won't get into that language. I'm not convinced, because it's a special election in September, I'm not convinced that that's going to pass, just unless it's managed. It needs to be husbanded somehow, so that we can get it passed. I think, my understanding is that it will be in the city's best interests to have that pass, and it would be in our group's best interest to have it pass. And so, one way of husbending that is to create a voter's pamphlet, and there are some time restrictions according to our charter, when you can do that, and how it's done, and all that stuff. But I would ask you to consider that. It's only the middle of late June, and that's gonna happen in September, but that'll happen in a blink. We get summer every once in a while, and normally during summer, it goes pretty fast. So enough said, I'd like you to consider doing a voter's pamphlet, and as a way of placing some advocacy statements to the voters. Thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mayor, can I, Tom, can I ask you a question?
Excuse me.
I mean, and, I'm sorry, I understand what you said, and I agree with most of it, but I was just wondering, I mean, ours is not the only public safety levy, so are you also going to the county and asking them the same thing?
I did that today.
And?
And they had discussed it, and they're not going to do that because they're one year away from the end of their public safety levy. And so if they were in your position, where there are four more years, they would do that. But they're within one year of doing it, and they're, and so they've decided, at least the way I was told, I was told, that's the reason by Ralph, that's the reason, where they only have one year left, and so they're not going to do it.
So one, having one year is okay, but having four years...
Well, that's their judgment.
I mean, I, like I said...
I'm not defending that, I'm just telling you the reason.
Okay, so if we make a different judgment, then, I mean, not to say we're not going to, but I just wanted to make sure that you understood that there were more public safety levies that were, that besides the city of Albany.
Yes, I do.
You know, we're not the only, quote, bad guy.
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Well, analogous to what you were saying about the voter's pamphlet, is that something that private contributions can help contribute to, to have done?
Yeah, they can, that can be done on their own, pay for it.
Okay, well, it's no secret as to what side I was on, on that whole election process, but I'm just as willing to put up personal money to help fund, to get a voter's pamphlet out there to help get the message out, because Tom's absolutely right, it is in everybody's best interest to get that thing passed.
If I could add, while I also agree that it is in the best interest to have it pass, it's important to understand, of course, that if the city puts out a voter's pamphlet, the city's statement in that pamphlet cannot be advocacy.
Right.
And so the advocacy portion would have to come from community members and groups who would pay to put something in the pamphlet. I'm sure Mr. Cordier knows that, I'm just making it clear that you understand that the statement the city would publish would have to be factual and not advocacy.
However, my understanding, Mr. Delapore, is that individual council members could act as advocates in that pamphlet.
If they pay a fee to publish something, just as any other citizen can put material in a pamphlet.
Yep, thank you.
And that fee structure is determined by what?
The county, probably, what they'll charge.
The county will not be doing a voter's pamphlet, so if there's a voter's pamphlet, the city would need to put that together. We've not done one, how much it will cost will be, is unknown. We have not done one before. There is a, I did talk to the elections office about doing an informational sheet instead of a voter's pamphlet, because that would be much less expensive. The same rules that apply to city staff doing a voter's pamphlet would apply to that. So the community could do that, a one-page flyer. I didn't come prepared to speak about it, sorry, but my recollection is that if it's informational only, there's no restrictions, if it's advocacy from one way or the other, then you would need to form a PAC. But cost-wise, that would be much less. I don't know how much a voter's pamphlet would be, we would have to find that out.
And if I may, while I express no opinion on whether or not you should do a voter's pamphlet, there are, I agree with Mr. Cordier, that some level of public information and support, or opposition, I suppose, is warranted. There are many opportunities that you can have. You can organize and host, for example, community forums, where you would invite people who have an interest, that could be both private citizens, councilors as private citizens, could be Mr. Cordier and his group, could be anybody to participate. That depends sort of on getting it to be enough of a community event that the public notices, and I'm not one to speak to that. All of the other customary vehicles for publicity, be it yard signs, or letters to the editor, and all of those things are, of course, available. I think Tom brings up an interesting point, of course, which is, all that the voters really get is the ballot statement, unless there is a voter's pamphlet, at least all that comes with the ballot. I will say, however... That's not right?
A voter's pamphlet doesn't necessarily come with the ballot, it usually comes out in advance of the ballot.
Well, but, okay, they are relatively contemporaneous. I don't want to argue with the boss.
Yeah, they are separate, so...
And you need a ride home, so...
I completely agree with anything the city attorney just said.
I was just going to say that one advantage we have this time is that because we had no discord about the wording of the explanation that is in the ballot title, that explanatory statement does reflect the fact that the change is one that has come as a result of agreement, and that both sides, to both the city and those who were initiating the change, are in support of the new measure. So one advantage we do have is that we have a ballot title statement, which, while certainly not advocacy, highlights the fact that this is a compromise measure that was agreed upon by all sides. I'm hoping that a voter would look at that, and whether they were on either side originally would recognize the value. But I can't speak for what people do.
Jim, I agree with that statement, the issue that we faced during the election was how do we get people to open the envelope and look at the ballot? That's the issue.
We need to put some other juicy items on this. I don't know.
Okay, all right. So, okay, thank you, Tom.
Done.
Okay, anyone else from business from the public? Okay, all right, not seeing any. Next is a second reading of the ordinance, and Jim, this is your, the real one that you did a great job on.
Well, thank you. This is the last step in the ongoing saga with the Burlington Northern. You've seen this franchise several, many times previously. It is unchanged, except with regard to the highlighted areas. The highlighted areas, the railroad wanted to note that we were repealing the prior ordinance, not just superseding it. The railroad wanted the dates put in, which made sense, we were gonna do that anyway. That's item 2.5. And the third change is the two-letter word B had inadvertently been omitted in 6.3. Otherwise, it's exactly the same as the franchise that you saw previously, and already taken a first reading on. And I will say that, while not, normally my job is to give you discretion, in this case, I need to point out to you that you've already authorized a contract with the railroad whereby you promised you would enact this franchise. So your discretion is limited here. It's whether or not you want a lawsuit, basically, but you have that discretion. So what I would ask you to do, is I would ask one of you to first move to amend the franchise to conform with the version that is on the dais, and after that amendment is hopefully passed, I would ask that you allow me to read it a second time and adopt it tonight. It needs to be adopted tonight to keep consistent with the timelines in our contract.
So I'll make a motion to conform the wording of the franchise to... So I'll make a motion to conform the wording of the franchise to...
What's on the dais.
To what's on the dais.
My second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Madam Mayor, if I may, then I'll read it. This is an ordinance renewing the franchise of the BNSF Railway Company for the placement of rail facilities within the City of Albany, State of Oregon, and repealing and superseding ordinance number 4420, as codified in Albany Municipal Code 3.24.
I'll make a motion for adoption of the ordinance.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Besides kind of commending Jim for all the long years of work on this.
You gotta give him a job at the railroad by now.
Can you tell us how many years you've been working on this?
Five.
Wow.
And if I could just throw in my two cents, I mean, this is one of those moments that isn't going to get much attention. Hasso perhaps will write about it, but the media in general isn't even here, and yet it really is a good piece of work that has, that resolves some sticky issues that have been out there for a long period of time, and I hope it's the signal, too, and I think this has been true for the last few years, of, of a good relationship, a good working relationship with BNSF and the Short Line Railroad in, and managing to have them take some interest in our affairs, and I think they would say that we clearly were interested in their, their welfare, too, and, and that was the key to getting some important issues taken care of and securing some property for the city, and I think setting the foundation for a good future. So really is, I think, a commendation to Jim for his, his persistence, and, and it's a great outcome for the community.
Well, and I'd also like to say that I am hopeful that this is a change in the tone of our relationship with the railroads. We have historically had a very good relationship in past years, you recall all the years that Mayor McLaren was involved in one railroad item after another, and we initially had some good cooperation with the railroads in the acquisition of land for the multimodal station, and it unfortunately, and that was a different railroad, that was UP, but it was the same short line involved, and over this franchise issue, we couldn't reach agreement, and the big stumbling block for the city was Water Avenue, because the folks in Water Avenue have been putting up with, in staff's opinion, a fairly intolerable situation for a lot of years. And our hope is that we have changed the tone of the discussion from my conversations with Mark, I think he's, he's getting cooperation now that we haven't previously seen from the short line, and we are optimistic that not only will the terms of the agreement be good, but perhaps more importantly, if we can change the tenor of the relationship to be more partner-like and less adversarial, then in the long run, we are hoping that will pay dividends. Only time will tell.
Okay, all right. Yep, okay. All those, and we've already got a motion on the floor, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carried. All right, great job. So glad to have that one over. Next is adoption of the consent calendar, there's only three items on there, so I'll entertain a motion unless somebody would like to have an item pulled off.
I'll make a motion for adoption of the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carried. Okay, business from the council. Bessie, anything this evening?
I just want to say that I may have said that I was thinking about you guys while I was on vacation, but I really didn't. It was great, it was a little bit, a little bit hot, it was about 10 degrees cooler than the week before, because I'd gone to Las Vegas to see with our granddaughter, and she brought her parents along, you know, but just to report that building in Las Vegas is just booming right now. They are, I mean, last time we were there, three years ago, there were so many things that had started, big casinos, hotels, stopped. They just, they went bankruptcy, foreclosure, for whatever reason, but now they've, there's at least two or three that are building on the strip, there's houses going up all over, and so even though we're not doing quite as well as they are, it's nice to see, because there were actually, three years ago, there was hardly anybody on the streets as you were going, you know, the casinos were empty, the shows were empty. Now, it was just totally crowded, and so hopefully it's, it means that the economy is turning around a little bit, at least it is down there, so it was kind of nice to see, because they just said that building is going on everywhere there, so...
That's great, yeah.
Yeah, had a good time.
All right, Bill? Dick? Okay, Rich? Okay, Ray? Okay.
The only thing I have is I was out at Talking Water Gardens today, and we had some seniors that came on out there to visit the gardens, but if you haven't seen it lately, it's like, I'm just amazed this spring, how much the plantings have grown. It is just, the cattails are just everywhere, and I've never seen such tall cattails, but it's just looking beautiful, but when I first got there, it was about, I think, 10:30, there was only a couple people, cars there, and by the time we left, I think it was about, I don't know, around 1:30 or well after, there was 12 cars in the parking lot, and that time I saw two photographers come in, and then one person came in to do, one artist came in to do painting. It's amazing, each time I've been out there, I always see photographers going out there, it's just, it's amazing to see how much Talking Water Gardens really attracts a lot of the artists, you know, in our region, so, but yeah, it's doing, it looks really, really nice out there. That's it that I have, and actually with Talking Water Gardens is next month is the Oregon Mayors Conference, it's going to be in Corvallis this year, so I'm assisting Mayor Julie Manning with some of the sessions, and the first day will be a tour for the Oregon mayors that would like to attend of Talking Water Gardens, so we'll be busing them over to get a, get a tour of the gardens, so we're kind of looking, looking forward to that, that weekend, so that'll be the last weekend in July.
Okay, anything, Wes?
Just a couple of events that are occurring tomorrow at noon in the council chambers, we're having a little sort of a gathering for Heather, who is, Heather Hansen, who is leaving as our Community Development Director to go to Florida, and I think there's some informal gatherings, one for Craig Carnegie on Friday at 5:00, 4:00 at...
Cala Puya Brewing Company.
Cala Puya Brewing Company, which may have influenced my, my memory of it, anyway. And then also, of course, we have a swearing-in ceremony for our new Chief of Police, 3 o'clock here on Friday as well, and I think that's, there's an informal gathering, I think, on Monday for Heather as well.
And Tuesday at noon for Kevin Hamilton.
Yes, yes, yeah. We're losing a lot of really good people, in my judgment, and I mean a lot, in this case, three or four, but it's, you know, our opportunity to, to say goodbye, if you'd like to take advantage of that.
Yep, sure will, yeah, thank you. Okay, is that it? Staff have anything? So, no? Okay. With that, we will recess to executive session to discuss real property negotiations in accordance with ORS 192.6602E. Okay, thank you, folks.